... meeting for Tuesday, May 26, 2015, the order. And please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to deal quickly with one technicality before we get to swearing in of elected officials, and that is, I need the board to vote to accept Michael McCaskill's resignation from the Middle School Repurpose Committee. And the reason for that is, a selectman can't also serve on another board or committee. So we just want to get that cleaned up, so...
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept the resignation of Michael McCaskill from the Middle School Repurpose Committee.
Second.
Okay, moved to second. Any discussion? You don't want to reconsider, do you?
No.
Should I vote on this?
No.
All right, here now, we'll put it to vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. You resign. Good, thank you. Okay, now I'll call on the town clerk for swearing in of elected officials, new elected officials. Everybody who has recently been elected, come on up. And by the way, congratulations while you're walking up. Thank you for serving the town. We appreciate it.
All right, just a little technicality first.
Uh-oh.
That's okay. And just sign your name for me there. And Mr. McCaskill, would you be willing to sign this for me, please? Thank you.
You should keep track of how many times in your Board of Selectment decree you'll actually sign your name.
I know, sign your name. Okay. There. Are we ready? Oh, hey, I didn't see you. You know, see me afterwards, because I've got forms you've got aside. Okay. I apologize. All right, raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
And state your name.
Commonwealth.
Do solemnly swear that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and support the Constitution thereof.
And support the Constitution thereof.
Aye.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me and state your positions.
As my trustee of the jury.
For the Town of Harwich, according to the rules and regulations, the bylaws of the Town of Harwich, and the Constitution of the United States. And I just have one more thing that I'd like to present to the two new selectmen. I've created a... We didn't get any of that. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, again, congratulations, Janelle and Michael. The training's over with now. We have to get on with our business, unfortunately.
Thanks.
I will say, on behalf of those old codges, including me, who are left over, that I know, you know, any way we can help, let us know.
Thank you.
This is a team, needs to be a team, and we need to build that team as we go forward, so...
Thanks.
Let us know, okay? Weekly briefing, Mr. Spitz, town planner, wants to talk about ISO insurance, very exciting topic.
Well, actually, it is, and I am pleased to have the opportunity to start your year off on hopefully a good note. This concerns our flood hazard insurance, which is not a fun topic, because so many more people have had to get flood insurance this year. However, for probably at least 10 years, we have been rated by ISO, we have to put in a lot of staff hours to do this, but it's worth it, because when I first got here, we had a 5 percent, not a huge reduction, but every homeowner who gets flood insurance in Harwich gets a 5 percent reduction on their policies because of the work that the town does. Anywhere over the country, there are communities that participate this, there's a couple dozen in Massachusetts, if you go out to Michigan or California, you can find communities with much higher ratings and much greater discounts. So we were evaluated, we get evaluated once every five years, and going into last September, we had 561 points. Now, what that means is, if you have at least 500 points, you move from category 10 to category nine, and you get your 5 percent reduction in insurance rates. So we were trying to make sure that we maintained at least that 5 percent. We had to get to 1,000 points to get to category eight and to get a 10 percent discount. The only community on the Cape that does that is Chatham. There are six communities in the state who get a 10 percent reduction, none who get any better than that, and we are now the seventh community to get that 10 percent reduction. We have the letter of recognition dated May 18th to Larry Ballantyne, so we'll ignore that part of it. But we were able to get to this 8 percent largely through the efforts of people such as my assistant, Elaine Banta, who has written a lot of community outreach information that is on our website, and Amy Husowski, who has verified that a lot of the land in the floodplain meets natural resource functions and is preserved. So since we have so much town-owned land and wetland in the floodplain, we have 629 points from the category of protected land in the floodplain. So with that 629 points, we have now moved up to Class 8 with a 10 percent reduction, and all our homeowners should be getting that when they renew their insurance.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else under weekly briefing? Larry?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, when I brought you up to date on C-VAC matters, I was unfamiliar with an important development, which is that an organization celebrating its 25th anniversary called the Environmental Business Council of New England has announced its 22nd annual awards for outstanding environmental energy technology application achievement, and it's going to C-VAC and several of the member towns on the Cape and the Vineyard. The awards will take place in a cemetery...
Cemetery, wow.
Right. Decided over by the congregational church. An award ceremony on June 18th at the Newton Marriott, and former Governor William Weld will be the keynote speaker, and I'm pleased to be able to announce that Mr. Hughes' calendar will permit him to attend and accept the award on behalf of Harwich.
Thank you. Another chicken dinner, yeah.
And it's very appropriate, because in your previous incarnation here as a selectman and as a chairman of the board, you instructed us, it's at least 10 years ago, to get started on something in the realm of renewable energy, and it took a long time. An unrelated matter that's in your consent agenda regarding the race, the permit application for you to approve for October 4th, I would just like to point out that while the race director and the organization that promotes the race is a profit-making organization, and the race is not held to raise funds for a particular charitable cause, nevertheless, charitable organizations who provide workers receive generous donations by the race director afterwards. And one of them, for example, is Students Taking Action Now Darfur, STAN, the organization that was originated at Harwich High School a few years ago and continues with Montemoy, has received $4,000 on December 5th and March 25th total, I don't know why it was in two amounts, for their work on the race last year. And this fall, we want to encourage the participation of other groups in Harwich for things like course guides, parking, water stops, and that sort of thing.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else under weekly briefing? We'll move on to public comments or announcements. Lou, or Urbano?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, good to see you all. I'd like to speak a little bit tonight about the Alboro House, if I may.
Go ahead.
Is that all right?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm putting together with a group of individuals a volunteer effort to paint the house, and we will be hopefully getting free paint. We will be scraping, we will be painting, if we can get the approval of the board, of course. I believe you own the property, correct? The town does?
Yes.
So we'll need the approval, and it'll be hopefully made up of both professional painters and first-time novices and those in between. And I believe people, I have one person on the historic committee that has already volunteered to bring the water, which we will need, so we're happy to see that. I'll have a plan to the board, hopefully within a week or two, to let you know the dates. It'll probably be over a three-week period, mostly on the weekends, but also during the week. And some items that, if the town could provide for us, would be very beneficial, such as the ability to put out signs for professional painters for that period while we're painting and so forth, or coverage under your umbrella policy in case someone should get hurt and so forth. But I'll have that to you in a week or two, but just wanted to get the ball rolling. And if you ask me why, it's because it needs it, and because we have a lot of people in the town that want to do some good and believe that it's in our historic district, and every time people drive by it, it's an eyesore. So we will do our best to make it come up for, at least up to specs, for a few years.
Can I just ask for a second? Is it clear, you've got to check out what the colors are going to be or color is going to be?
Check with historic, yes.
And if you come back to us with what the plan is, what weeks you're talking about doing this, Chris, if you could, you know, I'm sure we can figure out the umbrella insurance and that type of thing. I also don't want anybody, how should I say it, your age and older getting up on the third story, but, you know...
Do our best.
You manage it. I think it could be a fun event, quite frankly, and it's well-needed.
Good.
Obviously, you know, this board has been looking to figure out really what to do with the building, but you're right, the outside needs some attention, no doubt about it. And I don't know if there's any carpentry work that needs to be done, maybe we can coordinate that so that our maintenance team can help out with that ahead of time.
Great, that'd be great, really appreciate it.
Yeah, any questions from the board? Any comments, or...
My comment was going to be, just make sure that you have the colors set with the historic people.
Will do, will do. Thank you.
And I'm sure each of us will show up at some point in time. We'll probably bring the water, but...
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
It'd be a great event, and I think the more we can publicize, but if you can come back with your plan, then it'll be helpful.
I will, two to three weeks at the max.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else in our public comments? I just made a couple of comments, one on, and Larry, did Larry leave already? Larry Cole? I guess he did. I'm reminded that on Wednesday, June 3rd, which is a week from tomorrow, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Community Center, the Lower Cape Save Energy/Save Money Meeting will take place, this under Cape Light Compact, to discuss regional energy efficiency, funds available, and what their plans are going forward. So if you have any interest in trying to save some money, make some energy improvements to your property, that's probably a good meeting to attend. That's Wednesday, June 3rd, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and that's presented by the Cape Light Compact. Also, just make a comment that, you know, website, new website, has been live for about two weeks now. I know there've been folks that have had some issues with it, which I would certainly expect when it happened. I got a bunch of comments and whatnot over the weekend, corresponded with Chris, he got things forwarded to Caleb, Caleb, you're back there, right? Who's working as fast as he can to resolve some of these issues, along with Foster. And I thought I'd give Caleb just a minute to explain how best people can report website issues to him, because sometimes it's not clear, you know, what he thinks may be the tab he hit on to report back to him what's going on, may not be what you think is the answer, so... Caleb, would you just take a minute and explain how you'd like people to get feedback to you? He's not used to being at the mic, he's used to being behind everything, so...
He's used to being behind everything, so excuse me if I'm a little nervous up here.
That's okay.
So, yeah, the website launched two weeks ago yesterday. It's been in development, it's almost been a year since we initially started talking about it, and as expected, not everything is going as smoothly as I'd like, but that's to be expected. So, yeah, I received Chris's forwarded email of Peter's this morning, and I went ahead and fixed everything that Peter had mentioned, and Peter, you also suggested that we sort of put more front and center away for people to get in contact with Foster and I. So I got in touch with the gentleman who's been our contact at Virtual Town Hall, and now if you go to the front page of the website, there's an updated welcome message, and included in that message is a link that will take you to the contact screen where you can type in your comment. Please, if you have any criticism or complaints, make them as polite as possible.
But also as clear as possible, I believe, because you can only fix what you can understand, right?
As clear and concise as possible, include any links that you might have, just to make the process of fixing it a lot more smoothly than myself or Foster hunting around to try to fix the problem without a lot of guidance. I guess that's pretty much it. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to...
And I'm assuming if someone sent you a comment by email, for instance, you'd be able to reply at least to them and say, hey, can you give me more clarification, or what do you mean by this?
Exactly. When submitting a comment, you give your email address, and that email address is then given to myself and Foster, so we can reply to somebody as quickly as possible. For example, I think within one minute of that new welcome screen going up, we had somebody write in in regards to how to go about getting an application to have a bench dedicated to somebody, I forget which pond, but... So it works, it works quickly. I was able to forward that person's comment to the appropriate person, and they said they would get back to them as soon as they could, so it's all moving forward.
Okay, good. Any questions for Caleb? I know it's a work in process, so...
Mr. Chairman, one of the things that we did at Department Heads is we had, I think Jamie at the time did kind of a walkthrough, and whereas a new site, maybe one of the things, we'll do potentially two things. One is, maybe we'll have him come in, Caleb or Jamie, at the next meeting, and kind of walk people through some of the quick hits, so people have a sense. And I think we were going to put something on Channel 18, too, to kind of orient people to kind of how to use the website.
Just walk them around the website.
So we'll try to do a little bit of education, because it does have a different feel and a different look to it, and I think a lot of it is just education.
A lot of us got used to the old one, finally. And then they changed it on us, how could that be? Okay, anybody else? Thank you for your efforts, we appreciate it. It's, we know it's going to get better all the time, and these things just, you know, it's a natural occurrence that as you launch something as massive as this and as comprehensive as this, you'll have some hiccups, which is fine.
And I'm more than willing to fix anything as fast as possible. Peter, as I mentioned, you had a couple of issues that you reported this morning. David Spitz had an issue that I took care of today, and Jeremy was so kind as to alert me to another issue just before the meeting began, so I'll take care of that first thing tomorrow morning.
So by tomorrow morning, you'll probably have 200 folks. But anyhow, that's good to get the feedback. It shows people are using it or trying to use it anyhow, which is good.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other public comments or announcements? We now move on to the consent agenda. I'll just point out that the consent agenda typically is for items that are, I was just calling fairly routine, but any board member who would like to take any one of them, you know, out, if you will, and talk about it separately, we're certainly able to do that. So I would just ask for a motion on the consent agenda at this point. Linda?
Mr. Chair, I move the consent agenda and the actions indicated. A, vote to acknowledge the town administrator's completed performance evaluation and approve compensation increases for the fire chief and finance director town accountant contingent on successful performance evaluations. B, a vote to authorize the town administrator and the conservation commission to file the land grant application, and to have the town administrator service project manager in connection with the application haul property at Bell's Neck Conservation Lands. C, vote to accept the resignation of Tracy Ventura from the Council on Aging effective immediately. D, vote to approve the Harwich Cranberry Harvest Half Marathon, too many words, and 7.3-mile road races on Sunday, October 4th, 2015. And E, vote to approve the Harwich Chamber of Commerce Parade to be held on Sunday, September 20th, 2015.
Third second?
Second.
I'm moving second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Or else get the phone, if you'd turn it off to be helpful. That's okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Here now, we'll put it to vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, to vote, thank you. And we have no public hearing or presentations and no old business. Under new business, we have requests for establishing Pleasant Bay Cruising Club moorings. John Rendon, Harbor Master?
How was Memorial Day weekend, by the way, as far as activity at the harbor?
It was good. We had, Saturday was a real busy boat day, a lot of people put in. The winds on Sunday and Monday were pretty significant, and so we didn't have a whole lot of boating activity. We had a significant assistance case, had a member on a 40-foot sailboat get hit in the head with a boom, gashed his head, concussed. We went out there, took the guy off, brought him in to Harwich Fire, who was waiting for us at the dock, and then the Coast Guard towed his boat in to Sacquet Tucket, so that was, and it was pretty crummy seas, so that was a challenge. But all in all, everybody won't...
Thank you.
Fine, Mr. ... John Rendon, Harbor Master, before you is a request to designate two moorings that are currently being operated by the Pleasant Bay Cruising Club as special purpose moorings. They've had their moorings for quite some time, and I just discovered during the renewal process that they were being applied for as a regular public mooring, but they were being utilized as a special purpose mooring, as is defined in our harbor management plan. Public moorings, we have regulations that state that whoever uses that public mooring that it's permitted to has to use it for a minimum of 30 days, and the boat that is on that mooring has to be registered to the permit holder. These moorings that are used by Pleasant Bay Cruising Club are used by its membership on a first-come, first-served basis, so technically, they're not being utilized, and they're in violation of a harbor management plan without that designation as special purpose. And special purposes, the definition of those are for, to promote education, boating education, boating activity, so the Pleasant Bay Cruising Club falls within that definition, but for whatever reason, have never been designated as such in our harbor management plan, and that designation has to be made according to the harbor management plan by the Board of Selectmen. So that's the request before you.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Want to attain a motion? Someone wants to make a motion? Anybody want to make a motion?
Come on, Janelle, make your first motion.
I move that we accept the, well, the, what is it?
Just read it here, the request of the Harbor Master to establish Pleasant Bay Cruising Club moorings.
Just read that, okay.
That's okay.
Okay. I move that we accept the request for establishing Pleasant Bay Cruising Club moorings.
Second.
I'd move...
Michael's over there.
He'll get his chance in a minute, and that's like, come on, spread it around, right? Said move the second to approve the request. Any further discussion? Here now, we'll put that to a vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, to vote, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thanks.
Okay, next, which is item B, recommendation of the Selectmen's Interview slash Nomination Subcommittee to appoint individuals. Do we have a report from the interview committee?
We do, there, Angela?
Yep.
Okay. We do, there is a listing of the nominations. We held interviews. Some of these people are the ones where we didn't have the posting correct, so we had everybody rounded back up and come back in. We spoke to all of them, we explained to them why we had to do it the second time, to make sure that everybody understood that was just a posting error, reconfirmed that everyone wanted to be on these committees, that they had applied for, and therefore, there are our recommendations.
So could I ask that we at least read the names and what committee?
Certainly. We have, for Bikeways, we have Shayna Neely, would you like to have any information on these people?
I don't, but if anybody wants any question...
I would.
Okay.
Certainly. When people usually, when people apply for something, they're asked to give, answer
certain questions that are on the questionnaire, many of them give a resume, and then they come in and we talk with them. So for Bikeways, Shayna is currently employed in the Board of Selectmen's office in Chatham. She's quite familiar with town government, and she is an avid cyclist. I think she said she did 1,200 miles a week.
What?
I know.
That can't be.
Can't be.
No, that's...
I think you're making the...
That's more than Dana DeCosta does with his Fitbit, so...
It's a huge amount. She paddles like a little banshee.
I guess, you tell me.
The real estate and open space, both nominees, Wendy Way Woods-Hartwell and Marsha Smith, they're both realtors, they've been attending meetings to become familiar with the Real Estate and Open Space Committee. We did discuss with both of them that the obvious issue of if they are looking at something on a real estate in open space and they have any connection with it, because they are both realtors, of course, they recuse themselves, they both clearly understood that, so we did go through that. Wendy has been on design committees, she's been on the Vermont Rail Corridor Committee, economic development committees, and a library trustee, not all in this town. And Marsha Smith, she's a Realtor, she has a background in sales, presentation, and management. Council on Aging has had three open positions, now with today's resignation, we're at four out of nine. Richard Wastack, he's been an assessor since 2004, he's also been on the real estate and open space. He's done many volunteer activities for Harwich, and he wanted to help considering that there were so many open positions on that committee. Voter information, we have had open positions for a long time, two out of five, and we had two people who came in, Emily Milan and Tina Evans, both of whom have, are young people, yay, and they're both full of ideas, they talked about how they could assist and come up with different ideas to use technology to perhaps spread more of the word, do different things in voter services. I see peg back there, yeah, yeah. Emily is currently employed as a librarian at Books Library, so I'm sure you've all seen her, and she felt that the things that she had to do in her job is, you know, she has to assist people in seeking education, information, seeking resources. She said she has to be neutral in doing this, which is a very big thing in voter service, and she has a focus on technology. Tina Evans has a bachelor's degree in speech communication and broadcast journalism, and she does coaching and event planning background. And in the historic district historic commission, a full member declined to continue. So Miranda Dupay-Dewitt, she's been an alternate for some time, and she comes highly recommended by the chair of that committee, so she's moving into the full membership position, and she did request that. And Wendy Ray Woods-Hartwell is filling the unexpired term as an alternate. And lastly, we have Pleasant Bay Alliance, Dorothy, but she prefers Dolly. She was solicited by Alan Thompson and Carol Ridley. She's been a member of the Friends of Pleasant Bay, she has a long history of community involvement, PTA, League of Women Voters, and school committees, so these people all seem like they would be good additions to town committees.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
The information on these that you just read off of Linda, is that part of, or will that be part of our packet, or is that something that we obtained through front office? If we, as members that aren't on the interview committee, can we sit in on those meetings, or does that create a forum?
Of course they are.
Those are public...
The meetings are open, open meeting law, they are posted and people show up.
Okay.
So anybody is welcome. We actually had, for the first time in two years, two people at our last interview, so that was great. It's like, wow, what are you doing here? So they found us, but they are open meeting, and of course, the, all of the information Sandy has, they're of course available for review.
And can we get that in the packet, or should we get that?
I think we should discuss that, if we want to change that, fine. The board has not, up to now, asked for that information. However, all of these are in the correspondence files that you get on your Dropbox.
Okay, great.
So they're available.
Thank you.
Okay.
Let me just add something.
Go ahead.
What we usually get is, this is the application that comes in, and then we usually get some sort of one or two-page resume, quite often handwritten, and that's the information. We always ask the question of, why do you want to serve on this committee, and what do you bring to it? So those are two things that are important. We've had some issues in the last two weeks with postings.
Can you speak more in the mic, Angela, just on the side?
We have, we've had, in the last couple of weeks, we've had some issues with postings that we thought were post... that we thought were posted, that weren't posted, so we're making a change in that, in addition to that, this kind of information. Sandy will attach the copy of the posting to it, so we will know that it's posting and the date's right.
Mr. Avano?
Mr. Chair, if I may. My wife and I were the two that did attend the meeting, and.
Is that another cheap date?
You know, I do think.
This is my ongoing joke with these folks, by the way. This is, you know, coming here is a cheap date, so.
I do think there should be some kind of acknowledgement of how many committees we've actually gone to and listened, and find it quite enjoyable, by the way. The Subcommittee was interesting, and I truly would invite as many people as possible to go. It was not an interrogation session. It was not a follow-my-line-of-logic session. It was truly a great discussion with a good group of people, and with the hope that they've open-minded in this. Now, one of the things that I've seen by going to so many committees is exactly how difficult it is to be a committee member. It's not an easy job, because we all enter into any situation with preconceived notions and with our own biases, and in many cases, our own agendas. And yet, you're asked to be there and be open-minded, be fair, listen, and take the responsibility. I can only say this. I've been to a lot of committee meetings, and no, I'm not a member of any committee. And I've sat there, and I've said to myself, I would hate to have to make a decision. I feel for those people because of the pressure that they're under. You're balancing a lot of different issues, including financial. So I was glad to see what I saw. I, again, invite people, please, go to these meetings. I've been treated with nothing but respect. I've been given the opportunity to speak up and sometimes speak out, and so far, I think, I haven't been kicked out of a single one. So it works. Thank you.
Is that a challenge?
Okay, so any other, any other discussion or any other comments? I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Selectmen's Interview Nomination Subcommittee as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Moving second to accept the nominations. Any further discussion? Hearing now will put it to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. It's a vote. Okay, item C is information request relative to renewal of South Harwich Meeting House Agreement. Just for background, I think everybody knows what the South Harwich Meeting House is and being rehabbed, I guess I would call it, or rejuvenated for many years now. And Susan Ford is the, Judy Ford, I'm sorry, why they say Susan? Judy Ford is the spearhead of all that, and she will be here in a couple of weeks. We have renewal of the agreement. I think the agreement runs out at the end of this fiscal year, if I'm not mistaken, the end of June. And so Linda asked that we would, we would put on the agenda at least a discussion of some of the items we would like her to respond to, come prepared to talk about. I think, I think some of us would like to get better understanding as to when, you know, what needs to be done to finish this thing so that the public can use it, and any other details. You know, and maybe at some point in time, the Board of Selectmen should take a tour of the inside and see what it looks like, but, you know, that type of thing. So Linda, yeah?
I think the other thing that I'd be interested in is, is I, I think we've seen many times, Judith has come in with the pictures and shown all the work that has been done, the findings that they've had, the, I mean, the chandelier is really pretty and entertaining part of this, too. I think at this point, we're at a, I'd be looking for what remains to be done specifically. How much is it going to cost, cost estimates? And total that column up, and then what do they have for resources, and is there a gap? And if there is a gap, how is it going to be filled? Because I'm, I think they're at a punch list level at this point, so those are some of the things I'd be interested in seeing. Also, I know that our, I think between either Mr. Lawton and our former Assistant Town Administrator, that there was a draft use agreement that was given, because for the both of you, what they have is they have a license to restore the property, but there is no use agreement in place at this point. So that's another piece of it. What is the status of this draft use agreement? Because I believe it was going to their board, their, their committee, their group that is restoring the property, and therefore come back to us that we can end up with a mutually agreeable use agreement. And part of that use agreement is, who's going to pay the bills?
What exactly are they planning to use it for? Have they presented that?
I think the idea of, that, I think that we've heard from Judith Ford has been things like potentially weddings, wedding, you know, weddings, because it's a beautiful, you know, the inside, it was a meeting house. And I think we've heard music presentations, perhaps lectures.
Events.
Events. So I think to have that kind of, it's a.
But at some point in time, someone's going to show up and say, I'd like to have a wedding. And so the question is, well, then what do you do? Is there an application you fill out? You know, when can, when can anybody expect? Particularly weddings, you know, people book these things a year ahead of time, you know. If you had booked it last year and said, oh, I plan to have it this May, you'd be disappointed because it's not done. Not that that was the schedule, but I think we're getting closer to what that should be. So I think we all need to understand what the plan is. I think that's the bottom line here.
Part of it is part of that use agreement, will there be insurance requirements? Who's going to cover the insurance? Who's going to do the snow plowing? Who's going to mow the grass? The responsibilities of the, the building and the property management. Who's going to hold the money? You know, how is it going to fund itself, type of thing? So it's, it's all of those that you would have in any kind of use agreement. So I'm looking, I'm, you know, at this point, I think, to me, we need to start moving towards those final decisions and those final pieces. They have been working very hard at it, and I know, you know, I've seen periodically, and it's just, it's going to be really, it's going to be lovely. They've done a tremendous job. But I think we're at the point of, I think we've done three extensions?
At least.
You know, it just has taken a long time, longer than I think was anticipated.
So Chris, do you have enough to convey to Judy the information I'm looking for?
Perhaps a letter from the Town Administrator just conveying this, these requests and.
If I remember correctly, there were two dates that I saw in an email that she was available. I think one was the twenty-ninth.
I thought that was, yeah, the fifteenth and twenty-ninth.
Fifteenth and twenty-ninth, yeah. I would say, just because we're looking for this information, that maybe the twenty-ninth is a better time, just to give her time, because I think she's away at the moment, if I remember correctly.
She is.
Yeah. Is that okay with everybody? Say the twenty-ninth?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm fine with that, as, as long as the information is presented.
We're asking for it, so let's see what comes this way. Okay.
What I'll do is I'll put together a draft and put all the different elements in that we're looking for. I don't know if there's a sample one that the Board is comfortable with. I know we prepared one for, trying to dig at a different location. I know Albra House, we did a license agreement, did a license agreement for, over at the facility on Bank Street. So we'd have a few models that are out there.
This was an actual use agreement that is probably in the files, Chris, because I believe we sent them an actual use agreement, a draft use agreement, as opposed to a license agreement. It's got to be, it's got to be in the files somewhere.
Any else on that topic? Okay, we'll move on to D. Amend the personnel bylaw compensation plan for FY two thousand sixteen, approve the job description for golf seasonal and operations manager, and add the position of water slash wastewater superintendent to the personnel bylaw classification plan. Chris, do you want to discuss this, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Quite a few moving pieces, but what I'd like to do is I'll go through each of the components. Simply put, what we're attempting to do is, we have eight unions in town, and we have, everyone else that's not within a union falls on this schedule, non-union or personal bylaw compensation. The funding for this was actually included in the FY sixteen budget, so the, the funding is actually already in place. That was done in place once town meeting concluded. There's actually, I guess, four, four schedules that are being adjusted. On the full-time management staff schedule, a two percent COLA has been included in that. These would all go into effect as of July first, consistent with the fiscal year. So item A is a two percent for the full-time management staff. Item B is during the, I guess, this past winter, we had talked about different positions being regraded and, or reclassified into certain spots. And to that end, we did put in, the deputy police chief was, was put into a classification, the M seven. As a result of those review, we had also looked at regrading the, or reclassifying, sorry, the Assistant Town Administrator from the M four to M seven. Before any search would be done for the assistance position, I'd like to get the, the job description squared away and the reclassification squared away, so we can advertise it appropriately. So the Assistant Town Administrator, so you have two things in your package in regards to that. One is the, the survey that justifies it at the M seven, so it'll go from M four to M seven. And then we also have an updated job description. I did get today some fairly extensive notes, so I think I'd like to be able to go back and kind of rewrite that. I don't think content-wise, we're going to change that too dramatically, but it was kind of pointed out that it was a little rough. I just took an existing one and used that. I didn't get creative and, and kind of start from scratch. So I, I think the person that sent some comments made some sense. But I think that doesn't really do anything in terms of the reclassification request in terms of the salary survey results that we had provided. The position of the Director of Highway and Maintenance was also in the same classification when we compared to comparable towns. That was actually lower level in terms of compensation than what our contemporaries. When I say contemporaries, too, we did look at positions in other towns that are smaller, potentially with even less duties, and when we, when we had that study done, we kind of kept that in mind. So we're not, we're not talking about moving people to the, to the high end of the scale on the Cape. We're talking about just being a little bit fair and moving them from the bottom up more to the, to the mid-level. This next one is the, the position of Water and Wastewater Superintendent. This position was removed a couple of years ago when the union had incorporated this into a, a union agreement, that obviously the town and the union had agreed to. One of the board initiatives has been to remove that position from the union. Certainly, we have made efforts and strides to do that. We are still in negotiations on this topic. What we need to accomplish, though, is if we are successful, or when we're successful in removing that from the union, we need to have a spot to put it. So I, I didn't get too creative. I mean, it was an M six prior to it being removed from the union, so I advocated to have it as an M six. I do want to say that, just kind of publicly, I, I, working with the Water Commission, that we did send a letter out offering the position, and it was my hope that we would get the negotiations wrapped up. I thought we had a lot of the big items done and just a few of the smaller items left. We did not get that done. So we will amend the offer letter to the individual and make sure, and I did talk to him today, and he's comfortable with this, he will start in the union position, and then once we get the agreement finalized, then he'll be moved to the, to the non-union position. But that one is important, that we at least have a position slotted so that the person can go into that position. On the full-time administrative staff, basically, this is just a two percent cost of living adjustment increase, again, consistent with the budget. On the seasonal staff, twenty-five percent, I'm sorry, twenty-five cent per hour cost of living adjustment was included. We did have a couple of exceptions on this, the grade nine position as the golf instructor. We did not adjust that. We thought that was, the compensation level was, was reasonable. And that, we did adjust that. The, the town does not have to meet, and I know it's a little bit of a strange thing, but the town municipalities don't have to meet the state minimum wage requirements. We only have to meet the federal minimum wage requirements. But I've always had as a practice that we at least want to maintain some parity with that, so even though we don't have to, there's no reason why the town should, you know, have people go to McDonald's or other fast food place first before coming to us. We should try to have a, a competitive pay scale. So the twenty-five cent per hour allows us to do that, to kind of keep pace with the, the minimum wage. The Board had voted under item B here, under seasonal staff. We had voted to reorganization, the Board had voted to reorganization at the Golf Department. We are still in the process of slotting positions and coming up with job descriptions. So in this case, we do have material in the package for the Board. We have come up with a, the title is Golf Seasonal Employee and Operations Manager. One of the things that Roman found when he started is that we have a lot of seasonal employees, and there is no seasonal manager to go with that. So we have restructured, and now we have, we will recruit a person that will be hired as part of the seasonal staff to oversee the seasonal staff. The range that we had, the duties that were being done before, the person was making about twenty-six, twenty-seven dollars an hour to do that. So we have, that was added as a grade eight in the range on seasonal staff, between twenty-one to twenty-five dollars per hour. That is kind of based upon our past history of what we paid a person to do similar type of, of duties. Also, by doing that, by adding that grade in there, we moved grade eight to nine. That was actually on the golf instructor, and I think that was, started off at thirty dollars an hour. There's no change to that rate. We just moved it up and slotted a grade eight more appropriately. Also, on item C on that, we have a shellfish instructor. This one, it was, it was a grade six, but it was grandfathered at a higher level. The person that was doing it had done it for several years. They've moved on, and now we have another person coming in to do it. This is the person that works with Hines to, to go through the, the shellfish lab. And that one, we actually moved it to grade eight, which is more consistent with the payment level of twenty dollars, I think it was twenty dollars an hour, and that's consistent with what we had paid the person previously. So that is just reclassifying that into the, to the range that makes more sense. On all part-time, other part-time staff, we did do a two percent cost of living increase across the board, again, to kind of maintain some parity with the, the state minimum wage. We did put in the material, the job description for the, the Golf Seasonal Employee and Operations Manager, and as alluded to earlier, when the Board considered the Assistant Town Administrator position and the Director of Highway and Maintenance, it had asked specifically for a updated job description on the Assistant Town Administrator. So that's why we took a stab at trying to update that material.
Any else?
That concludes my.
Just to be clear, all these items, changes, modifications, are in the FY sixteen budget, correct?
Everything has been tied back to the budget.
Thank you. Questions for the town administrator? Linda?
One question. On the proposed plan for the non-union compensation plan, the bylaw positions, one of the schedules that was in the packet. Remind me where the deputy fire chief is? Is the deputy fire chief in the union?
Yes.
Okay, so that's why, but the deputy police chief is not.
Correct.
Any else? Angela?
I, I agree that you probably need to take a shot at rewriting the job description. I think it's, language is a little difficult, but I think conceptually, the thoughts are all, all right. It continues, the spreading out of leadership of the various departments reduces your span of control, so that you can at least meet with people that are reporting to you. But I have, I have a question, and we, I know we have authorized in town a personnel position, which we really haven't had anybody in for years, I believe.
There is no specific personnel position. The position of the assistant performs that function.
Okay. All right, well, I think we have to have some focus on that, because I don't see that in here.
Yeah, that should be in there as one of the main areas.
Okay.
I think once that, once that so-called cleaned up or modified, I think you'll see it clearer.
Okay.
Linda?
I just thought, I was just wanting to make sure that there was some sort of focus on, on that area, and it either had to be there, or we had to find another way to get it covered.
Right. Linda?
I think it would also suggest some thought given to the difference between personnel management and personnel administration. There's the paper and little file folders, and making sure everybody gets their personnel reviews and evaluations on a timely basis, but then there's the management side of it, helping department heads understand if they want to do something like reprimand an employee, how do they go about it? So there's the, the two pieces there, and I don't, I, I think that we need to do some work on that as to how that, make sure that both of those components are. make sure that both of those components are in there.
Clarification, I guess, sir. Because I wasn't involved, you spoke of in the position of water and wastewater, the board's initiative to remove the water and wastewater, the water commissioner, I guess, or the water superintendent from the union. Why is that, why was that an initiative, I guess? And then because the union's involved and we're offering them a non-union position, but putting them into a union, why are we doing, is there a timeframe on the hire? Does he have to be brought in before that negotiation's made? And is there a, I guess, an additional expense to doing that? But more, I guess I want to know what the board's initiative, what the thought was and why we are taking that out of the union.
Yeah. Chris, you want to try that?
Yeah, I actually, acting as the, the water commissioner as well, and water superintendent, acting water superintendent, I've had a, a chance to really understand what's transpired. And, you know, when in doubt, you just tell the truth. The, the bottom line is that the previous superintendent had engaged in collective bargaining, had engaged in doing performance reviews, did a lot of the, the management elements which would make under law him a confidential employee. That employee took it upon his own initiative to then negotiate himself into the union. And I don't believe he did that with the full knowledge and acquiescence of the water commission. So it was done in a less than, less than open process. And when I went down there and had some discussions with the, the water commission, it became readily apparent that that had transpired, that, that it was not a full discussion. Quite honestly, I, I think that they liked having and, and do need to have, especially at a remote location, a superintendent that is going to do confidential work in terms of personnel investigations or whatever the issue may be. And, and certainly having everyone else in that facility be unionized, that's really the one management representative we had. So I, I think that this board, the, the current board, or I guess the previous now because of a change that just occurred, but the, the board that I worked with said, no, we didn't really want that and we wanted to have it, that that position continued what they used to do and be outside of the union. So as part of the collective bargaining process, and that was discussed at the board level here and the board agreed. So that has been a, an initiative with the union to remove it. That information has been shared with them about the original origins of that. And under labor law, I mean, that, there's really no valid reason for that position to be in the union. But, you know, it just goes to show you that sometimes things do happen, I'll be nice. But, you know, in this case, I mean, there's no, there really is no management reason for that position to be in the union. So that's been the stance and, and we have, we have made quite a bit of progress with the, with the managers' union. And we have that as, as one of the areas in which we have some agreement on. There's other areas where we don't. And in collective bargaining, you have to have kind of all or nothing. So we will work through those and it's my hope to, to bring a, a finalized settlement. I've, I've been able to negotiate seven out of the eight since I've been here. This is the eighth one, and hope to have it done prior to the end of June.
The other thing I'll just point out is Chris has spent, I guess, almost the last year acting as basically the water superintendent, which has, has diluted all his other activities on the town side of government. And not been able to get some things done that we might have, you know, wanted to get done on, on the board level, if you will. And also, apparently through the interview, advertising interview process, the water commission has found the person they want. And so the person, you know, it's just like, if you get a notification, okay, we want to hire you, then you start making plans to come on board and saying, you know, I'm going to get a notice to my current, current employee, I'm going to relocate him and do whatever. That's now in place. And we don't know when the negotiations are going to finalize with the union, so we just got to bring him on so we can get him on, quite frankly, at this point in time. It'll work out.
So if we bring him on
Yep.
in the union and we don't negotiate this out anytime soon, then he just remains in the union?
He remains in the union.
Yeah, it has to be.
And he's aware of that. I, I've kept him informed throughout the process that, you know, here's where we are and here's what we're attempting to do. So he's, he, he knows what's going on and, and he's good to go. He still wants to come.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but that is a position that you need licenses and whatnot to?
Yes, you need a water distribution, water treatment, and then wastewater. And he actually has, one of them he needs to upgrade, but he does have some of the other, he has a lot of the wastewater. And I think by job description, we actually asked for that within two years. So he has some of the licenses already. He's got a lot of practical experience, which I think will be a added benefit for the town.
By the way, I think, if I'm, if I'm not correct, we, we saw his resume, I think a week or two ago. I don't know if you've seen it.
It is funny that we have, there, there's a couple of positions in town that don't fall within the purview of the board of selectmen. One of those, well, the group position is really the library. They do their own hiring. And then the water superintendent is actually directly under the, the water commission. So I think we may have provided the, the cover, the cover letter or the offer letter, but I don't think we provided the full detail. But he has been vetted. We did the query, we did background. I did the background myself.
All right. Leo, you've been patient out there. Leo Kukunas.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to congratulate our two new selectmen and apologize that I thought you guys started at seven. I didn't realize you had just festivities at 6:30, so.
You missed it.
I'd like to congratulate our new, our two new members and welcome them to, to serving the town of Harwich.
Thank you.
With that said, I have a couple of questions. One is during the administrator's report on this particular item, and I know the chair, chair already asked this, but the assistant town administrator, you're going from an M four to an M seven, and that was budgeted? That amount of money was budgeted?
Yes.
Is there, is, was there a discussion on why the increase, when, I mean, did we have a hard time trying to fill that position at the M four level or?
I'll just jump in and tell you what, what I think I know. What I think I know is that when we brought in the assistant town administrator, we, we had a job description which is, was lower requirements than what we're now advertising. I think in the last year and whatever, we learned a lot as far as how the distribution of responsibility between the town administrator and the assistant should work out and what Chris is looking for, for his chief assistant, I would just say, you know, to describe it that way. And I, I think that he's, he has convinced at least the previous board that those are requirements that he really wanted to get to. So we have the requirements.
So there's a change in the job description, basically?
Yes.
The only other thing I would add-
Excuse me, do you agree with that, Chris? I mean, I-
Yeah, I, I think that's a fair characterization. You know, I, you guys know the history better than I. I mean, I came on board. I had the job description. You know, I would say it was interesting doing the, the survey work that most other assistants on the Cape that are in smaller towns have a significantly less area of responsibility. And yet we were the lowest paid. So that's just not equitable in my mind. That's the, hence the reason for the adjustment.
The only thing I would add, and I'm not sure if you, the board is planning on voting the entire description that was read by the administrator, but I want to draw your attention to the fact that the agenda only reads that you're going to amend the personnel bylaw for 2016 to approve the job description of the seasonal golf operations and the position of the wastewater management, not the lengthy list that the town administrator just read. So I don't know if this time is of the essence of this or not, but.
And included the assistant town administrator, which I, I thought I heard Chris say he was going to do some work-
That's not on the agenda.
No, I know. He's going to do some work on it and bring it back to us, is what I thought I heard.
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, in fairness, it says amend the personnel bylaw compensation plan for FY16, comma. So everything that has been read was on this, on the calendar.
Compensation plan.
The compensation plan was on there. So I think we did do a laying out, everything that we needed to lay out on that.
But you do intend to bring back a revised version of the-
Absolutely.
You know, separately for the assistant town administrator?
Yes.
What's the pleasure of the board at this point in time? I can only deal with motions, folks. Sorry.
Oh, let's see now. You, go ahead.
Go ahead. Go for it.
You go for it. You're there. I would move that we amend the personnel bylaw compensation plan for FY216 and improve the job description for the golf seasonal and operations manager. And add the position of weight, water, wastewater superintendent to the personal bylaw classification plan.
There's a second?
Second.
I would second it to approve the, the plan and the job descriptions as listed. Heard a discussion? All right, now we'll put it to a vote. Olson, Ferris, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Puts a vote. Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Item E, set a date for a public hearing regarding wastewater cost recovery. Someone can refresh my memory, but a week or two ago, we had a presentation by the, the wastewater implementation committee. There's a lot of discussion about how to fund wastewater going forward. And this, the board determined that they wanted to have a public hearing. And so Jeremy, yeah, Jeremy's out there. The wastewater implementation folks are suggesting three dates for us. Either June 17th, June 23rd, June 24th, 6:00 PM, potentially at the, at the community center. Because we hope we get a lot of folks interested in it. And they would like to not only use that opportunity while you have folks there to talk about how you fund this thing, but also to get into the history of wastewater in, in the town of Harwich, where we are today and the process, the needs for the future, then the cost recovery model, and then certainly questions and answers. So it's meant to be more like a forum, but as part of that forum, my suggestion would be we break out the cost recovery model as a public hearing and do that. And if we're ready at that point in time, we would make a vote. Later on, actually pretty quickly, we're going to talk about a summer schedule. And if I remember right, in the summer schedule, I was advocating we would take off June 22nd, which is a Monday, I believe. So if we're going to do that in our schedule, we probably shouldn't schedule anything else that week. So I just throw out there that June 17th is a date that I think, at least for me, works. I don't know how it works for the rest of you. But they've offered three dates and, and we need to figure out how to accommodate them.
These are all Tuesdays?
Seventeenth is a Wednesday.
Wednesday.
The 23rd and 24th are two consecutive days, so I don't know what day was, is it Tuesday, Wednesday?
Tuesday and then the 24th is a Wednesday.
Yeah. Jeremy, how are you?
Just wanted to point out, those three days were three dates that David Young, CDM Smith, vice president, was available to meet within the next month, based on the timeline. Doesn't mean there aren't other times or other days that aren't available. We also have not, we were waiting to hear back, but we haven't checked the schedule with the community center as far as availability for nightly meetings. But if that's booked, there's probably some other opportunities we could have. We also thought the community center, we'd have the ability to tape it and potentially air it live from there as well.
Unfortunately, the seats, if I remember right, the same seats we have here are pretty much the same, so it's kind of hard, but anyhow.
Either way, we're the same.
I, I would think the 17th makes sense. Might as well get it done.
Everybody okay with the 17th?
Do we have time to post?
Got three weeks.
So we're set?
Jeremy, if we tell you the 17th, can you get that solidified with your group and the community center and get back to Chris and we'll get it posted and? Okay, but again, it's, it's an opportunity and, and by the way, the, the wastewater implementation committee put forward the concept of having it in a bigger venue, having, you know, while you have people there, let's take an extra hour or so, or hour and a half, whatever it is, and, you know, explain whatever it is we have for information and start the process, so.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock is fine with everybody, I think. It's probably going to go for two hours, two and a half hours, I'm guessing, you know?
Okay.
All right? All right? Good. Thank you. Town administrator's report, Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have come to the final stages of the police chief search. So something I think the board needs to kind of think about, we will be forwarding four names. I just need to prepare the memo. Tomorrow I will call the, the four top candidates, advise them that their names will be put before the, the board. So I, I think the board should think about a process that they want to use. I do think that certainly having the opportunity to have the, the board interview folks in public session, I think makes a lot of sense. Maybe taking some time and then at the next meeting determining who they want to, to go forward with and, and begin negotiations. I would say that I think based upon the, the pay scale of the current chief and the pay scales of this, the, the four candidates that were put forward, that we should be able to bring them in within the chief's current salary. So I don't believe there'll be additional appropriation necessary in this. But I, I think the board needs to kind of lay out, I think, in terms of the finance director position or the town accountant slash finance director position, the board had that process. I think they did decide that night. And then I was authorized to commence negotiations, commence negotiations. I think I got the information back to the board and then the board ultimately voted the, the contract. So if the board wanted to go that same process, I certainly can provide the, the contract that we currently have with the existing chief and have that as a, a place to start. That's something that the candidates will most likely look at anyway. So that's something that, you know, I, I have the schedule so I can put together, but we're ready basically to do the names pretty quickly. So if you let me know, I think you had said, Mr. Chairman, that maybe have that as kind of a, a separate meeting or have that at the beginning of the meeting or, or do something to break that off from the session?
I'll, I'll just share my thoughts and, you know, we can go from there. We hired Chief Mason. We interviewed three or four candidates in public. I remember it was, I don't know, a Saturday meeting or something. It was, it was during the day. I remember that. And each of them typically would spend 45 minutes to an hour, you know, asking questions or, you know, go through their resume and you, you ask questions and whatnot. And I think what happens is, is you go through the process, you know, it's like any interview, you sort of figure out, well, that's a good one, that's not so great. You know, this one fits me, that one doesn't, you know, kind of thing. And so you're making decisions in your own head. With the police chief, I would, I would suggest or advocate, you know, we pick a day and a time and whether we'd start at six at night or we'd start at five, whatever it is, and interview for up to 45 minutes, take 15 minutes break, go to the next one. And you, certainly the candidates aren't going to sit here and listen to each other. That's not what you do. And then the question becomes, what do you do from there? Sometimes instantly pops up, you know, who you think might be the one. But typically, and one of the questions I would ask for Chris is, in the process of, of sorting through the candidates and the resumes and whatnot, what kind of background checks were done? You know, for this important position, the board may say, you know, we may want to send one or two selectmen or something to Fred's hometown or something to find out. I'm just making this up. You know, the guy works in South Boston. Okay, let's send him to South Boston and say, hey, how do you like this guy? What's going on? You know, just to find out. And that's perfectly fine if that's what we want to do. You know, there's the whole query check aspect of it and those types of things. You certainly, you certainly don't want to bring someone on and then find some surprise. So oftentimes, you know, to take that extra week to go do some work could be beneficial. And I think, I'm thinking I would advocate for that. The question is, who's got the time and the, you know, the wherewithal to go do it? Because that's always an issue. And how do you go do it? You know, and, and do you want to do, do you want to interview, we will interview four people because they have four candidates, so it's go with the recommendation of the committee. But then do you want to somehow try and down-select that and then go visit, I'm just making this up, two? Or do you want to go visit four? Or, you know, how do you want to deal with it? And, and by the way, all of it done in open, none of this behind any kind of confidential stuff. I mean, it doesn't, you know? It just works better that way. And it should be that way.
I'd be fine with having people visit, but I think that we probably ought to set that up beforehand. I know how quickly my calendar fills up. I do work. And so I think if we're going to do that, it's going, it should be interviews on this day, and then over the next three or four days, this person goes here, or two people go there, two people go there. But I think we need to set that up and up.
Chris, Chris, when will you-
It's organized.
Yeah, I understand. When will you go public with the names?
It, it will really, you know, it's just a matter of doing the calls tomorrow just to make sure that the four candidates understand that the name's going to be public.
Okay.
So it could be as early as, as tomorrow. But I just wanted to make sure the board kind of had a sense for what process it wants to use. I mean, maybe just as a suggestion, we could have them come in next Wednesday, do the, do the final interviews, get that public piece done. The board can then, a couple of suggestions. You know, I'd be willing to kind of go, we could have a member of the committee join me. me, uh, the search committee, and then a couple of members of the board. Obviously, I don't think we want to have a majority because then you have to have a moving meeting.
Yeah.
But, uh, and then go tour those sites. And then once the board hones in, we'll have the detectives kind of commence their more due diligence background. We'll, we'll do the query, we'll do some of the, the basic elements, that's already been done. So I have that, uh, material. But if that's where the board wants to go, uh, and then we can kind of narrow it and then set up those site visits to, to see the, the chief or the potential.
So you, do you, are you thinking that Wednesday, June third, you're ready to have interviews?
Oh, yeah.
Is that, okay, I'm just.
Yep.
Is that a date that works for anybody or everybody or?
It's fine.
I think I can do the third, I don't think I can do the fourth.
What time? What time's starting? Because four people, forty-five minutes, that's four hours. So I think by the time ten o'clock comes, I think we'll all be sound asleep.
Well, the question is, you know, can we start at four o'clock or something like that? Is that possible or not possible? I'm just throwing that out.
Do we have to do it in the, I thought you said something about a daytime?
Well, I'm, I'm just looking for suggestions, you tell me.
I'd prefer it during school hours.
I'll do it at five in the morning if you want to, but.
You're going to be doing it by yourself.
I'll call you.
Well, that's an interesting question. I mean, you know, we've had these people come in and, you know, they've all been during the day. No one has raised issues, so we could.
Well, the only topic is, the only topic I have is, and this is always a debate, you know, how much interest do you have in the public sitting out there? And if you do things during the day, is that, not consciously, but are you excluding some folks that might not come? But on the other hand, you're probably allowing some folks to come that wouldn't normally come. So I don't know, you know, it's just one of those things. We need to get this done. And if, you know, doing it from ten in the morning till we finish, if that works for anybody or everybody on the third, I don't know, let's, you know, let's do it.
I, I.
You guys okay with that? I mean.
Yep. Ten AM is good for me.
Ten AM's good? And you got to finish by what, two or something? Is it?
Three.
Okay, but if we have four interviews, we'll hold them to forty-five minutes, you know?
So I'll block off from ten to three and we'll schedule. Now, there is a chance that one of the four say, well, I got something else, but at least I'll go on the presumption.
And if we had, we even had the mega, so we had to come back later to interview the last one or whatever, we'll, we'll figure it out, but we need to get this done.
So we'll do forty-five minute time blocks with fifteen minutes in between for the board to.
Yep. And I would say, and I would say, once you get, once you announce who, you know, the people are finalists, if you could get us their information, obviously.
You'll have it, you'll have it first. I'll, I'll put together a package and we'll get it to you.
Okay. So June third, starting ten AM.
And the, and before we start that session, we should have an idea of some of the questions or areas we want covered, so we spread out those, those questions.
Yeah, we actually, uh, in, in terms of the process, we had seven people, so each person generated several questions. So you have seven different perspectives, so we have fourteen questions. We'll give you that, just as a place to start.
Yeah, that's helpful.
Yeah, I think typically the way it goes is, you know, we ask the, the candidate to, um, you know, tell us about themselves and whatnot for, you know, five minutes or whatever, and why they want to come to Harwich and, you know, what they have to offer. And then we just go around in sequence or have announced questions, so. Think of all your good police chief questions, you know? Well, you know, like, have you been involved in community policing before and, you know, I mean, just, you'll, you'll quickly, I'm sure people will also, you know, give you some help as to, oh, hey, why don't you ask this question? Why don't you ask that question? So. Okay, and then, so we did that on the third, okay? And then, um, I think that at the end of that, the board could at least have a discussion as to where they think they are. I mean, if someone obviously shows up as, oh, that's, you know, Fred's the winner or something, then I think we focus on, okay, let's go visit, you know, his or her location, whoever we want to do that. If we end up and say, okay, they're all viable candidates, they're all still interested in, in all four, then we go visit, you know, we figure that out. Okay?
So do you want ten, eleven, a lunch break and then one and two? Or you want just a half hour lunch break and?
Um, I'm of a mind just to bring lunch in and we'll eat for twenty minutes or, I don't know, half an hour or something.
I'll just, I'll keep it kind of now.
Yeah, yeah, it's not, nothing formal.
We can eat downstairs.
Huh? You're going to eat downstairs?
I said we can eat right in here.
Oh, whatever. Yeah, we're, we're good.
Okay.
We're flexible.
Okay.
Okay? So let's see if we can get that arranged and see, you know, hopefully they're all available.
Yeah, we'll put together a schedule and we'll attach that materials with it, so you'll have everything that we have seen so far.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I, I wanted to at least kind of rough through that to get a sense.
Yeah.
Um, the only other thing I had was just, we had a, a veteran, just wanted to call and say thank you for the excellent job that the DPW folks did at cleaning up Brooks Park for the Memorial Day activities. So I just wanted to, uh, Mr. Howard Peach was the, the gentleman, and I just wanted to pass that along, um, just a, a letter of appreciation to, um, to the DPW folks for having to look nice.
Okay, Chris, would you make a note just that, and I only noticed this because I walked by the playground over there yesterday, on the way, your way back from the service, there's two sections of the fence by the, on the playground that are ripped open. Looks like somebody wanted to take a shortcut instead of hopping the fence and it's sort of dangerous for the little guys.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay.
If you could take care of that or at least point that out to DPW, that'd be great. Anything else, Chris?
Nope, that concludes my comments this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, selectmen's report, um, I just have some items, again, it's two things. One is that, um, we're a new board, so it's time to move forward as a new board, but it's also getting to be, pretty soon it'll be the end of the fiscal year, and we need to start making our plans as to, to what to do, you know, in the, in the coming year. So in your packet is the, um, selectmen's policy on the role of what we call liaisons. And I gave everybody a spreadsheet, um, with, I think it's twenty-three boards, maybe I missed some, I don't know, but twenty-three boards and committees and whatever, commissions that we typically have liaisons for. And if you go through the, um, uh, selectmen's rules, if you will, once you reorganize, whoever the chairman is, will actually make the assignments on liaisons. What would help that whole process, whoever that is, is for each of us to take a shot at six or seven boards or committees we're sort of interested in or, you know, we have an interest in, and maybe you rank order them from one to seven or eight or something. Inevitably, there's always two people that want the same thing, but, you know, again, that's up to the chair to eventually figure that out. And in the past, we've also always said to people, if you want to horse trade amongst yourselves, have fun. You know, I mean, you know, if I have housing and you want housing, something else or whatever, and, but you have this one and, and whatever, we, we work it all out. And there's also guidelines about it. You know, it's not meant at all that liaisons are intrusive. They certainly are welcome at any board or committee meeting. They're welcome to, um, you know, offer, um, any input that the board may have to what the work of that committee or commission or board is. Obviously, they're not members of the board. And I think if you surveyed the folks here that have been here before and done some liaison work and probably others selectmen, you'll find out there's a lot of different ways to do it. My style is typically I show up at the first meeting, then I'm a liaison, announce who I am, give them all my contact information, and, you know, get to know the chairman a bit, and then basically walk away and say, okay, I might show up, you know, two or three times a year, but if you need me, call me. If you need some information from me, call me. If you need some guidance, call me. There are others, I know that Angela and Linda, Linda attend a lot of meetings, that's fine, you know? Some committees need maybe more, more information or handholding or help than others. And you'll figure it out on your own, you know, you really will. But the whole intent is for you to get to know the folks and the, you know, the leadership of the committees and understand what their needs are and, and, you know, be the link between the board of selectmen and the, um, the boards of committees. So I give you all an assignment, um, let's get this all back in next week if we can. If you sign it ahead of time, I'll compile it somehow, you know, whatever.
So you want it by Wednesday?
This Wednesday?
This Wednesday.
Sure, why not? Yeah.
Because we have to, if we're going to have it in the packet.
Well, I can just give you the results.
Just hand it out.
Tomorrow because of the holidays, so it's.
Yeah, that's, they're not going to get it done, I don't think you get it done by tomorrow. So get it to me, get it to me by the, by the weekend and, and all leash is consolidated and we can just pass it around. But again, it's up to, you know, we have to reorganize next week, it's up to the chair to deal with it once that happens. But at least you get a start on what you want to do, okay?
So you are reorganizing next week?
That's part of our rules and regulations, say, in the second week we'll do that. Second meeting after the election.
Okay, I misunderstood, I thought you said fiscal year.
No, no, what I'm saying is, we're approaching the end of the fiscal year. So when we get into goals and objectives, they're all set, I mean, not all set, but they're all focused on what we're doing in the year to come, which is fiscal year sixteen. Liaisons, as soon as we reorganize, that can be put together so we have our liaison list.
Great.
Okay? So, yep, go ahead.
Uh, I would just like to make a quick statement, which is, I, I don't normally respond to rumors and innuendos and misinformation, but, but I will this one. And I was advised that somebody out there is saying that I have been the liaison to the Housing Authority and how terrible that is because my spouse is an elected member of the Housing Authority. Well, yes, he is. And no, I'm not. I've never been the liaison to the Housing Authority. If somebody had checked that, they wouldn't be spreading that little piece of information. So that is an incorrect statement and I hope that by my saying this, it clarifies it. I haven't been on the liaison list for the Housing Authority at all and I've gone back through all of mine. Um, I think that you, uh, the information could have been checked before somebody trotted off on this little one. I am the liaison to the Housing Committee, which is a town board and is appointed by the Board of Selectmen. The Housing Authority is four elected people and one appointed by the governor. So they're very different. Uh, I, I also think that somebody confused me with Ed McManus somehow. He was the liaison to the Housing Authority and his spouse did sit on the Housing Authority. How somebody confused us is unclear to me, you know, we got that boy-girl thing going on. So a little confusing to me, but, but I hope that whoever's spreading this, stop because it's completely untrue.
Actually, truth, truth be known, um, I have the Housing Authority at the moment.
You do. Peter has the Housing Authority.
I do, son of a. Okay, anything else on liaisons? Okay, moving on to, yep, I'm sorry.
Is there a rule on that? And what is the rule on that?
What do you mean, rule on what?
If, if you have a family member that is associated with one of these groups, you should not be involved in that committee?
I don't think it's a rule, I think it's prudent behavior.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I would say too.
Well.
It's kind of, kind of.
I, I think that by state law, you have the ethics statute and the ethics statute has two components to it. If there's a direct family connection, the, the statute encourages you not to engage in that. And then the second standard is the appearance standard, which is really an individual call by anybody. If you think that the reasonable person's going to have the, believe that there's something going on, then the person should probably do a disclosure or contact ethics to find out what guidance they should get.
And for disclosure, uh, both Bob and I have filed with the town clerk that we are related for thirty-five years and that we, each person has indicated that, you know, my spouse sits on this committee, my spouse is elected to that. So we have filed those disclosures, disclosures some time ago.
One last, I think, well, as we're talking about disclosures, um, I did call a state, my mother is the police chief secretary. So I did call state ethics and I got a ruling on it. And I filed the form for, uh, with Anita, showing the potential conflict interest. State ethics ruled that it is not a violation and not a problem.
Terrific.
Okay.
Is that, just for clarification, does, does that mean if we're ruling on a, a police contract?
That would be, that would be a problem.
Okay, I just want to clarify.
Yes.
So you'll just recuse yourself?
If there was a compensation, they told me to, to pay attention to compensation.
That would be my understanding.
Yes.
That wouldn't inf- uh, impact on the interviewing, I don't think, does it?
What?
It would not impact on the interviewing.
No.
Our police chief? I wouldn't think so.
I wouldn't think so.
That was the specific questions I asked the, the ethics commissioner, they said absolutely not.
Always better to be safe than, sorry. Do you have a comment or a question?
I did about the police chief process.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, I'll back up, it's okay, unless somebody objects.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
How's it done with this?
No, no, I didn't see you. Go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, just a quick, quick question. Mr. Clark said it would be the same contract as the current chief? Is that?
Just as a place to start the negotiations, we would use that as a model.
Okay. Um, do you know where the current chief fits in Capewide as far as his pay right now? And, um, where that fits on the scale with the rest of the towns? Do you have that information by any chance?
We, we haven't done it specifically. My, my guess would be that he's probably a little bit lower than, lower than average. I mean, that's what I've found so far.
Okay. Um, so the same contract, uh, when you said that earlier, that's just a starting point and then you guys would negotiate with the person that you're zeroing in on?
It's, it's a public document, so someone with due diligence would probably be looking at that anyway, so it's a reasonable place to start.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, anything else on liaisons? We're all set on that? Okay, next, I gave you a sample, and it's only a sample, I made up my own, um, list, two things. One, just sort of housekeeping organizational things that, that I think as a board we need to get done, some of these you wouldn't even know about because you weren't involved, like this committee handbook that we've been working on for the last several months, needs to get done, um, et cetera, et cetera. And then a B O S, Board of Selectmen to-do list, FY sixteen objectives, those are just ones that I threw down. My suggestion is you take, either take that list and work it over, add your own, start out with a new list, whatever, but at some point, this board needs to come up with a consolidated list of goals and objectives before you start FY sixteen, um, because the town administrator also needs to put his goals and objectives and how we measure him. Um, his performance is based on how he does and those goals and objectives. And we don't need three hundred goals and objectives, we got to get it to a manageable list. So hopefully we can agree on, you know, where we go with some of these things. But I encourage you to start on your list, at least, okay? For everybody. All right? And then lastly, I have a couple of comments, but, uh, lastly, I gave you a proposed summer schedule. The reason for this is, is twofold. schedule. The reason for this is twofold. One is staff needs to figure out, you know, when we need to have people available and whatnot and coordinate their vacations with what, you know, what we're doing for meetings. Also, the non-resident taxpayer meeting is the one opportunity in the summer that we invite the non-resident taxpayers, particularly to come in. Sometimes they don't show up, sometimes they do, and have the different, have the different departments make some presentations, like the highway department tell us what's going on, youth and rec, et cetera. I think at this non-resident taxpayer meeting, we'll do a mini version of the wastewater thing, you know, that kind of thing. So we can work on that agenda. It also works around the Fourth of July, you know, so you got to pay attention to how all that works. So that's just a proposal. I would entertain discussion and then entertain a motion if someone wants to adopt this. Linda?
Just a, just a comment, one on the non-resident taxpayers. We don't do a very good job of publicizing that. And a question to the town administrator, is there money in the budget in this sixty-five billion dollar budget that we have to put an ad in the Chronicle and in other local papers, you know, come one you all, oyey, oyey, resident taxpayers, non-resident taxpayers?
Is that what you want to say?
Yes, you can.
Those are the words, okay.
I think we can do that. I think maybe when Angela was chair, we came up with a list of different topics that we were gonna cover. So I would suggest that if we're gonna pay for an ad, just to give people a flavor for what we're gonna talk about, we may want to have a list of three or four topics that folks think makes sense.
I think that'd be a great idea. Because I know they do that in Chatham. They take out a pretty good ad, and it says, you know, here's the, the topic we're gonna be talking about. But to actually get that out there, I mean, just putting it on our agenda.
Yeah, I'd like to get fifty people who, you know, have to pay their taxes no matter what, and have no real influence on what's going on. It'd be nice to see.
I'm curious, how many Harwich non-residents do you think actually read the Chronicle? You know, I don't know that, Chatham's different, for sure.
Oh, no, look, Bill is gonna have a stroke here.
I'm sorry, Bill, but it's true. I mean, having had business in Chatham for ten years, I saw.
Quite frankly, yeah, quite frankly, I think that a number of people use the online version. I'm thinking, I don't know, you probably had numbers on that.
And the ads come up on that?
But I've run into people that, you know, that live in New York someplace, and they say, oh, yeah, I follow what's going on in town all the time. I see your picture. You know, you're gonna get the same stuff going on, trust me. And they will complain to you as well, so get ready. But I think people, I mean, you can't force them to come, you know, you can't, you can't force them to be educated, but we have, we want to have them come in and let us know how we're doing in some areas. And, you know, typically they worry about things like beaches and the harbor and, you know, is my road in good shape? You know, those kinds of things. And they can also complain, obviously, about taxes or whatever. But, you know, they're typically not gonna come in and talk about Montomoy school system because they don't have, you know, kids in the school. And, I mean, they might, they might talk about it, but, you know, usually they don't. Usually it's about roads and beaches and fees and things like that.
Possibly for advertising some of the stick-in signs, the political signs, if there's any, if we're talking about budget, money in the budget. Signs that you could put out saying.
Well, we even have those.
Strategically located.
Yeah, we have those digital signs.
We have the sign boards.
Yeah.
Question, the reverse nine-one-one, can we separate the non-residents out?
I don't know.
Or is it just addresses? I would doubt it, probably.
I know it's by address. I don't know if it's by resident versus non-resident.
And it also depends, Angelo, on where the phone number's going, yeah.
Okay. So if everybody's comfortable with this schedule, could I have a motion?
A motion to accept the proposed Board of Selectmen's summer schedule.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to accept the summer schedule. Any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, it's a vote, thank you. I have one more, two more comments, I guess. One is that, just to let everybody know, several months ago, the board designated Angelo and I to meet with Chatham, two members of the Chatham Board of Selection, Selection, Selectmen, to start discussions on wastewater treatment, using the Chatham facility. And they have come back to us, Chatham has recently, and said, here's a couple of dates, when can you meet? So we're struggling with dates. But the intent there is that we meet with them and have an initial discussion. We had one meeting with the full boards, both full boards, last year sometime, and that's the last time we, quite frankly, had any real communication with them on this topic. So unless someone either wants to take one of our places or whatever or objects to it, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna figure out what date works and go ahead to meet. And we're, obviously, we'll report back and there's many discussions to come, but.
I don't object to it. I'd be happy to go. But I don't object to you, too.
Okay, all right. And the only other, anybody else on our topic? Okay, the only other thing is that during the end, or at the end of next week's meeting, we'll reorganize. So I think everybody knows we all get a slot doing something, so think about what you want to do.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
I just have one thing.
Angela.
Before I came here, I got an email from the county on their RPP plan, their Regional Policy Plan meeting, which is, there's a session on June 2nd at 1:00 PM at the Chatham Community Center. This is where they discuss their changes that they're proposing to their regional, regional plan, and they have a method and whatnot. Larry has been going there, and I've gone with Larry a couple of times. I can't make this date. So if anybody wants to, to go, it may be, it should be very interesting. It's, and it also will be a little long, so.
What does that mean, two hours?
Couple hours and seem a little longer.
Three hours?
No, that's it.
What's the date again?
June 2nd at 1:00 PM.
One in the afternoon?
Yeah.
Anybody available?
No.
I might be. I might be doing a municipal finance class in Marlboro.
Okay.
Waiting to see if I got a seat.
And I have already an appointment.
Can you scan that and send it around electronically, or?
I'll know tomorrow.
It doesn't matter. If I can change what I'm doing, I will, I will go. That's the problem I've had.
All right.
And if not, if all of us want it, doesn't matter. They, they've been trying to suggest more people knowing, and they have some interesting techniques that they're trying to get everybody to use.
Okay.
It's also a good place to meet other town people.
All right, anything else? All right, we're adjourned. You started your first meeting.
Thank you.
Made some motions, took some votes.
Signatures. You have to use that pen.
Gets harder from here on.
Oh, I'm sure. Thank you.